Martin said he was Canadian. Said he was Shank, like he was DNF.
Those are new marks.
He basically DNF'd.
I like them.
He wanted to get the last one on. I think the guy told him. Terminal.
We're good?
Make your.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Linda, you have a record of attendance? Any declarations of conflict of interest, anyone? You can declare at the time. And approval of agenda additions, I have additions. Ready to start writing? My apologies, but A, we'll put them under eight. So eight A will be garbage. These are discussion points. Eight B is an invitation to Chief LaQua. That's for Councillor Hood regarding four-wheelers. Eight C, Pride Crosswalk. D, change September council date. There's some things for in-camera, but I guess they're basically personnel and property. Anybody anything else you want to add or delete? Okay. Thank you. Moved and seconded, any discussions? Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Staff reports. CAO report. Go ahead, CAO.
Thank you. Your worship, my report is attached. It's comprised of the various motions of council and progress on those motions. It's attached for your consideration, and if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions for the CAO? Good. Natalie, do you have a question? No, you're good. Okay, that works. Get our good side. Okay, Fire Department report. Okay, any questions for the chief? Lots of, I do. Any, no, that's okay. Come right up to the mic. Any, they're doing a lot of work on the fire hall. Are they doing a lot of work on the fire hall?
Not that I'm aware of right now.
I thought I just signed a check. It said you worked.
Just signed a check, okay.
Must've been the wrong one, okay.
Yeah. Well, no, the only work that's been done on the fire hall lately would be the, in behind the fire hall, there was some paving done, some potholes and stuff, and things like that.
Don't say that too loud. Can't fill those potholes in, not do the rest. No, just kidding. Okay, anything else for the chief? Good, thanks, chief. Planning Department. And I don't, Morris is not here, but we can also call him. We can always call him if we need to. Good. I'm going too fast, someone stop me. Operations, and Mr. Ernst is here. Doing a lot, getting a lot done. Go ahead, deputy.
Thank you, your worship, to Dave, and maybe I talked to Jeff this morning about Clements, about just information of getting out to the residents out there, because I talked to two different people, and they had two different scenarios for the, for their, for driveways. I'm just wondering where we're at with that, and how the communications is going out there.
Good.
So, your worship, there are two different stories. The issue is the area between the street and the new paved trail, and whether or not it will be paved on the driveway. And the answer is, there are two answers. If the person, if the homeowner previously had their driveway paved, then we will pave that section, repave that section. If the homeowner didn't previously have their driveway paved, then it would be, it would remain gravel. So, in other words, if it wasn't important to them to have a paved driveway before, when they were paying, it isn't important to us to pave it when the taxpayer's paying. So, that was the way the tender specification was done, and so there are two answers. If your driveway was paved before, that section will be repaved and paved up to meet your driveway.
I just wondered if we can. Just wondered if we could communicate that, maybe instead of just by word of mouth, maybe by a letter or some kind of notification?
Sure, we can do that, that's no problem.
Good, okay, councillor McLeod.
Your worship and Jeff, I've driven the new Clements Avenue road a couple of times. Once I noticed a car riding on the multi-use trail, and I just wondered how we might react to that, if indeed we should react to that.
They're doing what?
Driving on the sidewalk.
Car, vehicles were respectfully leaving their home and getting to the multi-use trail and turning towards the street, either Parade or the other.
Driving on the sidewalk?
Yeah.
It's a multi-use trail, 12 feet wide, is wider than the normal sidewalk.
Removal of license, I'm not sure. Yeah. Okay. D? I mean. Well, yeah, it would be a police matter.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, okay.
It's just. It's just that the multi-use trail is not the road, and it won't stand up if too many cars ride it on a regular basis.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah.
Definitely. Okay, they'll put something in that, in that note. So, I have a question, when we do, I had a question, for example, from Church Street. I don't usually react to one, but, but when work is being done on their streets or on their sidewalks, do we contact the individual homeowners, let them know what's going on, or do we just do the work and then?
We normally put a letter out, deliver it to individual homes.
Okay, okay.
We've been doing that at Cliff Street as well.
Yeah, yeah, I knew you were doing that. Good stuff. Okay, thank you. Anything else for Dave? Finance Department.
Business as usual for us, auditors are in, you may see them walking around the building, working on the town water utility at this point. Just a quick note, though, just so you know, in case questions come up with tokens for water, we've supplied the municipality with a number of tokens at their request, where they wanted to have some on hand for the residents, in case their residents come in after last year's shortage. And we've also had requests and have supplied the South Ohio Esso with a number of tokens as well, that they can, they will resell at the same prices that we charge. Again, just that's a matter of just, their hours are more convenient than what our hours are for, they're open weekends, they're open in the evening. So, the Esso has 25 or 30 tokens, and the municipality has, I think, 40 tokens as well. So, just, we're not the sole source or place to get them this year.
Good. How much do they get for a token?
Price of a token's like $4.40, I believe, $4.39.
And they get how much? Like 20 gallons?
That's 250.
Two, 250. Okay, okay. Good enough, good.
And how many do you sell, Jerry? Like, this year's dollars, what is last year, obviously, but?
Last year, I think we had 750 or 800, given out to municipal residents.
Good. All right. Yeah, I can't see, go ahead.
Last year, we supplied 750,000 approximately gallons of water to residents of the municipality that are not metered on our system. Approximately number?
Yeah, because in addition to the tokens, Mariner Center was supplying water as well and somewhere else, I think Fire Department as well, behind the, behind the Fire Department, we were supplying some water as well to residents.
And we might not have been able to do that if the Department of Environment had our way and got over worried about salmonoids in the non-traditional waterway from the old fish hatchery down to Killam's Lake. We're dealing with it.
We are. Councillor Hood's on the job. Any more questions for Jerry? Yep, sure.
I think I told the minister in a letter I sent, as you know, it's, when it comes to people or polywogs, I'll go with the people every time.
We're with you. Okay, Yarmouth Rec, Frank, this is the blue paper. I have a question, without reading this, because I've just seen it. The Milo washrooms, is there an issue?
They're dated.
Are they dated as in they don't look nice, or are they dated as in?
No, they're, they're working, they're just, they're old and they're on, you know, they're due to be replaced.
Okay. Yeah, Jeff says that style will come back, give it another 20 years. Now, my, my question is, because I talked to one of the councillors in the municipality yesterday, and he just, he sits on your rec committee, and he just said, you know, are we, would be willing to share the cost of that? And I said, basically, correct me if I'm wrong, if Frank or your committee put forward a, a letter that said this is a cost, we can, could at least consider it in our budget for next year?
Yeah, I spoke with the councillor as well, and it's, it's on a list of, there's about seven projects on the list.
Okay, good, all right. Thanks, Frank. Anything else? Anything else for Frank, we're good? Busy summer. Economic Development. Ms. Natalie, welcome.
If there are any questions on my report, I'd be happy to answer them.
We all good, everybody? Facade program is extended quite a bit, too. Your light's not working, Sandy? Oh, there you go. Go ahead.
I just had a question, Natalie, the, on our website, when you go in, like, for our council meetings. Right. So, on Committee of the Whole, if, then if I go into, like, Economic Development Report, and then I click out of that, it takes me back to Town Council. So, is there a way that we can stay in Committee of the Whole? Like, every time you get out of it? Okay, so the report, so the report opens up to another screen? It opens up, and then when I want to get out of it, instead of taking me back to Committee of the Whole, it takes me to Town Council every time, so you always have to go back. So, I was just wondering if that could be. Yeah, I think the CAO may be able to answer that particular one.
Yeah, so probably the best thing to do is bring your device to, to our IT fellow, Jeremy, and he can look at that. I'm sure the behavior is, is different depending on how you open your PDFs, like, mine open in Adobe Acrobat, completely separate program, so it doesn't affect my view of the town website, so have, have a chat with Jeremy about that. Bring your computer in, and he can probably straighten that up for you.
All right, thank you, thanks.
That whole facade thing, 618,000 in improvements. Wow.
It's a lot, lot of money that the businesses are investing in themselves. So, we've pretty well, with the three pending applications, that I've, I identified a lot more detail in this month's report, because I wanted, as you're walking around town and taking pictures, that you can pinpoint the areas of improvement, but I wanted to specifically identify those other three, because they're significant with regards to buildings in the town with regards to new ownership, and landmarks in the town. So, once those three are done, we've pretty well, with the exception of, I would say, two or three buildings, covered pretty well all of Main Street.
Excellent. Good, go ahead, Clay.
Natalie, the sign issue, who's Brian's story? What entity does he represent?
TIR.
What's TIR?
Transportation, Infineer.
So, he's a government bureaucrat?
Yes.
And so, was this, yeah, right. Too many of those around. Just hang on, so, I need to get it back up.
Take your time.
So, the, this, I'm trying to remember what we were aiming at when we tasked you to get these prices. Was that the Mod Louis thing?
Yes.
Okay, so, we've got some, some prices here, are we going to do anything with this? I mean, does that need to come forward to council, at our council meeting, to discuss? Well, there's two, there's two options, depending on what's available for infrastructure.
Yes, so you can get the big billboard sign, or the tourism, wayfinding signage.
So, the process is, town develops a design and provides PDF version to Brian's story for review and approval, and the sign will be manufactured, installed, installed by TIR, once approved by both TIR and the town. So, are we going to do anything with this or not? Because it's on the agenda, and I thought we.
Yeah, no, it wasn't on mine, that's why I missed it, sorry.
All right, so I'll just bring it to the attention of council and see where we're going to go with this. I assume we, if we are, we will be discussing this at our council meeting.
So, go ahead, Jeff.
So, if, if you wish to do something with it, a motion should be made here. Refer it to council, make a recommendation to council specifically, if you're, if you're ready. It was information that was requested by, by council, and so I had previously circulated this, this memo to council, and so I thought, put it on the agenda, so that officially you've received it on your agenda, and you can decide if there's further action you want to take. If we were going to do this, there would be a budget issue, and we'd have to look at whether we have the resources this year to do whatever your wish might be.
Okay. So, sorry, I didn't, I haven't seen it for some reason. Two options. Okay.
Somebody else's initiative around council, so I just brought it up to ask the questions, and I'm prepared to hear any councillor that wants to move forward with it. I'm not really sitting here trying to make a motion about it, because frankly, it wasn't my idea.
Okay, so, all right, so Natalie, what are you thinking? Like, it was the big signs on the highways that say, here comes Yarmouth, and then are the smaller ones, the one where it says?
Right, it just, the ones where we identify, like museums, so they're tourist, tourist destinations.
All right.
And that needs to go through Department of Tourism, or Nova Scotia Tourism, they need to review that. So, I mean, currently, we have a sign that says, the Yarmouth sign, which has the, the wharf. So, if council wishes to adopt that or change that, something to do with Mod Louis, then obviously, that needs to be reviewed, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Or the Home of Mod Louis.
Natalie, in that, in that first option, would that be one where we modify the existing sign?
Yes. We'd reskin it, basically.
And so, not have to put up posts and all that?
Exactly.
And so, we would make it like an addendum to the existing sign?
I, well, it depends on what you'd like to do.
Or a whole new sign, what are they talking about?
Yeah, and you just reskin the, the existing sign, so you'd use the infrastructure, and then you'd reskin the sign.
Because that's the expensive part of, that infrastructure's expensive.
Yes.
All right.
All right, so what do you want to do here, folks? I mean, we can put it to budget to next year, if that, are we in a rush? What are you thinking?
Yeah, and I, yeah, it's good to have the, the Mod Louis sign.
It is.
But then, when they come into town, they say, so you got the Mod Louis sign out on the highway, what have you got in town that's Mod Louis? And you say, well, I think she was born down there on Hawthorne Street, and you go down there on Hawthorne Street, because, and you see nothing, because that's a question I was going to ask, if, if we put it to budget next year, can we do it in conjunction with? I was going to ask about the Dan Earl concept, right? And if we had something that was concrete, that they could come in and look at, besides the Mod Louis trail out on, between Parade and, and Stars, if we do something to that, or if we do something with the concept, or something along the likes of the concept that Mr. Earl had, I, I think by the time that tourism looked at it, and TIR, you're not, you're not going to be looking until next year anyways.
So, we need to, so to his point, we need to do a couple of things. We need to say yes, put that to budget, and, and number two.
Make it a whole concept of some sort?
Yeah, we need to get, we need to have a package, Mod Louis package, you're right. Can't say Home of Mod Louis, but there's nothing here.
Yeah.
Yeah, you need to have a destination, I agree with councillor Filmoni, yeah.
So, how do we?
You can defer that to staff, and then we can come back with some recommendations.
Because I think if you did, if you did the, the combination of the, the Dan Earl concept, and the highway sign, there's got to be money through Heritage, or.
Absolutely.
There's going to be money somewheres that you're going to be able to tap into to pay for part of the cost, right?
I agree with that.
Because I, geez, I think I went to Digby the other day, and I saw the, where the Mod Louis house was, and I saw another driveway on the other side of Mod Louis Lane somewheres else, I think I saw three or four Mod Louis things on the way up to Digby, then if you go down shore, down by Liverpool, they have a Mod Louis thing, but where's the Mod Louis house, is that at the Art Gallery?
It's at the Art Gallery in Halifax.
Okay.
So, okay.
Is that what you're thinking while councillor heard about?
Go ahead, keep your insight.
I'm thinking about two things, especially deputy, listening to you, we've got a number of, I mean, Lance Wooliver's very much involved in that Mod Louis campaign, I'll call it, for sake, I don't have a good word for it, but I'll call it campaign, but he's been very much involved in the Art Gallery of Nova Scotia, you mentioned the Digby in Liverpool, see, Lance, I think, lives in, down in Liverpool, or did for quite a time when he was putting all that together, and I'm just wondering if we're sort of treading on somebody else's toes here, we should get, I think we need some guidance, maybe talk to some people that know about these, and to see whether, in fact, it fits within, if what we're talking about doing is, is it just us talking, where's the initiative coming from? Is there somebody from the Historical Society, it was Dan Earl, basically, wasn't it, for down here? But the signage thing, I think we should be polite about it, and just ask the questions of some of the people that are involved with promoting the Mod Louis thing in Nova Scotia and all that, before we sort of try to steal a little bit, a little bit more of poor, poor old Mod Louis for our own benefit, I, you know. Something nice and, like, like was proposed down here with the den put forward, you know, I think that's respectful and all, but how far do we want to go with it? So, I don't know, maybe somebody could contact Lance Wooliver, and see what he thinks, or the Art Gallery of Nova Scotia? I don't know where else, I don't know if there's a society or anything around.
Well, we could find, we could, I mean, I'm sure there's something through the Art Gallery.
I think you would get some guidance there.
Yeah, so, so the other piece with the, with the whole sign, if there's a whole big sign that says Yarmouth, Home of Mod Louis, I think I said this at a meeting yesterday, too.
Birthplace.
Got to figure out who we want to, yeah, birthplace, got to figure out who we want to be when we grow up, like, is that who we want to say we are? Because we're a whole lot more than that, right? So, what we have there, that seaside, I don't know, I'm, I'm good with it, but I have no problem putting us smaller one, so do you want to look into that? Let's make a motion, somebody make a motion for staff to, what helps you, Natalie? What helps you?
Natalie, would you feel comfortable in your role as economic development, to carry the ball, if council were to say, look, could you contact the Art Gallery of Nova Scotia, perhaps Lance Wooliver, who has a lot of knowledge about this? Would you feel comfortable in doing it?
Sure, no problem.
Want to make a motion, councillor?
Make a motion, we have our.
Make a motion, we have our economic development officer contact the Nova Scotia Art Gallery in regards to the Mod Louis concept, and also Lance Wooliver.
Okay, and you can figure out if there's anybody else, okay?
Yep.
Okay, certainly, all right. Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Thank you, Natalie, anything else?
No, just wondering with the facade program, what the committee thinks, what's your next step after this year, Natalie?
There will prob, there will be a presentation at the end that we, that we normally typically do, probably in the November period. I would propose there's going to be another request to extend the program, but perhaps in addition to general facade work, that potentially we can add an option where businesses within those properties can come back for funding to do with signage, so.
I thought, I thought signage was within that.
It is included, but let's just say that, on average, the property owner is typically the main applicant, and so they only get up to 5,000, so if the average investment is around 15,000 or 20,000, they're not really necessarily, unless they are the business as well, funding the sign. So, as we get a turnover of businesses, or businesses who are now in a position to have money to do signage, it would be, it would be another option that we could look at or present to you for approval. Got to keep those blade signs rolling.
I agree with the blade signs. I'm struggling with the, we help pay, but. No. Okay.
Yes.
Good, anything else for Natalie?
Thank you.
Very much. All right, okay, we're down to business. Amendments to taxi bylaw, CAO.
Your worship, since you are now the acting as the Taxi Advisory Committee, there is a request for decision concerning increasing the taxi rates, and the request is basically an increase of $1.50 per ride, and it applies to boat, to 24 hours a day, so it increases the daytime rate, I'll call it, from $6.50 to $8, and the nighttime rate, from midnight to 6:00 AM, from $7.50 up to $9. And so, there is attached to the request for decision, a piece of paper that was agreed to, signed by four operating taxi companies in the town of Yarmouth currently. And I have also, I guess, in the request for decision, pointed out that, that your role is to sort of strike the right balance between providing fares that are, that are sustainable for a company to provide a service, and also accessible for people who require that service. So, that, that's your challenge. The other challenge that's out there came in the form of an email to Natalie, and that is, I guess, a changing landscape around how, how people receive transportation, and of course, I'm talking about Uber. And Natalie was requested in an email to look into bringing Uber into our area. Now, that is not typically something that a, a town, or city, or municipality does, but it does happen from time to time. So, as an example, there is a town in Ontario that has recently launched a, an Uber transit system, worked with Uber to create a transit system for the city, based on ride sharing. So, again, just bringing this to you as part of the information you'll receive, if you go to increase the, the taxi rates, you will receive a variety. a variety of opinions, and there are other market forces at work. So the process, because the rates are in the bylaw, is that if you agree to consider increasing the rates, recommend this to council, council would do first reading of a bylaw amendment at the August meeting, there would be a public hearing at the September meeting, at which time anyone from the public who wished to speak could address you, and then you're to reflect and make a decision on whether to increase the rates or not.
Okay, deputy?
I think, your worship, we had this conversation, was it last council, Jim, when the taxi operators were in, and some were in favor of an increase and some weren't, can you do it from, so they wanna go from 6.50 to eight dollars, or from 7.50 to nine dollars at the nighttime hour, can you, could you put a taxi rate anywhere from 6.50 to eight dollars if it's posted in taxi? And not set a, set a low rate and set a high rate?
So one's 6.50 and one's eight?
No, one's 6.50, they can charge 6.50 to eight dollars, or six.
But what I'm saying is, one company, are you saying one company?
One company could charge seven dollars, and one could charge eight, right?
Okay.
And somebody might like the eight dollar one, because they know the driver, they might be a relative there, so they might carry the groceries in, they might do something else, they might do something else, is that?
I don't know how that works.
Your worship, to answer the question, I can't answer the question, I don't know if you can simply set a range for the operators, or if you're required to set, if you are gonna set a rate, if you have to set a specific rate.
So these, but these are all the four, these are all for?
All four said?
Right, there's only four taxi captains.
Everybody did it?
And everybody's signed, so we're safe, I mean, these people need to make a living, I mean, six dollars for a drive, you know what I mean, that's pretty bad.
Six dollars for a drive?
I mean, they need to make a, need to make a decent living.
I paid about six dollars, I probably gave a two dollar tip or something, but to go from the west and up to the, what do you call it, Salty's?
Mm-hmm.
In Halifax.
Yeah, and I would give somebody ten bucks.
Seems to me eight bucks is quite a bit, I don't know, but listen, really, we're, drives you back to the meter thing, which we have ducked every time we ever went after. You wouldn't need, you could have, you could have a lower rate of the, that's how you get to where you wanna be, which is a lower rate for short, shorter trips, and a larger rate for longer trips.
We got our. So they're asking for this, it's their, you know, it's their business, and they're asking for it, my thought is to say yes, and then, I mean, if the public comes out and, I don't know.
So if we move this, there has to be a public here.
It goes to council.
It goes to council.
It goes to public here.
All right, we'll find out how many are in favor, how many are in that process.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion.
That we accept the recommendation.
Recommendation, okay, we recommend to council.
Recommend to them.
Okay, moved and seconded, any more discussion?
Questions?
Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried, okay, abandoned boats program, councillor Hood, you're gonna speak to that, I think.
And probably most people think that this is ridiculous, but anyway, I'm gonna go ahead, we get a lot of stuff in our emails, and this particular initiative came, was a report from the UNSM, so we read those reports, and the good news part of the story was that the government of Canada has for once stepped up and announced in a rather large way, that it's going to get, become involved in exercising some responsibility on wreck removal from places like Shelbourne, where we know that the municipal unit was challenged with that Farley-Mowit situation, but if you, if you dig down into the press release, they're talking about, there are currently 400 odd derelict ships in Canada, the press release says it is 6.3 million dollars spread over five years, which is about a million bucks a year for the whole country, the Farley-Mowit has cost the government of Canada three or four million dollars so far, it only resulted, the problem only resulted because the government of Canada decided, part of the Fisheries and Oceans, to go and chase the Farley-Mowit, 'cause they had Paul Watson's crowd on there, out there trying to interfere with the seal hunt, so the boat was arrested, the people didn't pay their fines, the captains went back to the Netherlands, Farley-Mowit's dead, that renegade, who is a fugitive, Paul Watson from B.C., is wherever he is in the world hiding out with another boat, and they let the boat go, and the government put it up for sale, and meantime, while it was seized, it sunk, and they've paid a million bucks to raise it, and then they sold it, and then somebody with not very much wherewithal bought it, moved it around, it ended up in Shelbourne, and the person, frankly, obviously, didn't have a lot of money, in fact, I think they put him in jail for not meeting a certain thing, Canada brags that it doesn't put people in jail for owing money, but frankly, I guess you can go to jail for owing money, so anyway, the point of this is, that sometimes these press releases overstate and sound good, credit Purnitat Jordan, the MP for South Shore, for getting something done, 'cause she did it with a private members bill, but the reality is, if you really get into it, think about the MV Canadian Miner, which went ashore on Scattery Island, the MV Canadian Miner was originally the MV Maple Cliff Hall, then she was renamed the Lemoine, then the Canadian Miner, at one time she was owned by the former Prime Minister's company, Paul Martin, she was sent off to go to the breakers in Turkey, and was sailing under the authority granted by Transport Canada, when the tow line parted, and she ended up on Scattery Island, to give you an example of that, the province of Nova Scotia got stuck for 12, more than 12 million dollars, the feds screwed it up, and they got back involved and found out that they had, it turned out that they had misevaluated by thousands of tons, how much asbestos there was, there was more bunkers in the boat than they said there was, it was a mess, and what really went on through all these pieces is, the feds, as soon as the thing hits shore somewhere, they deny any responsibility, and so this good news press release is little more than is Professor Harry Friedman said, bullshit.
What did Harry say to that?
He's a professor, a very renowned professor at Princeton University, I have his book down at my office, great reading, On Bullshit is the name of the book, and so that when you read that stuff, and the newspapers publish it, you should know that it is what it is, Harry Friedman's bull crap, I'll be a little more polite. Enough said, I've said what I have to say, you're not gonna be saved by the federal government with a $6 million budget for 400 wrecks across Canada.
What was the story, on the one that was off here, like down there, what was the story on that one?
That's not crazy, we almost got stuck with you down here, and I'm not sure you still owe some money on the front. Luckily it's gone.
Yeah, exactly, it's gone.
You got that, Linda, two thousand bullshit, okay, when you write that down.
I'll bring the book tomorrow, this is the book, I bought the book, Harry Friedman, professor of philosophy at Princeton University, wrote a book.
I've seen it.
Thirty pages long.
Yeah.
And the title of the book is On Bullshit, and I'm not, I'm not alive, because I can tell you that it's not part of English language, that word is in the dictionary, and I'm not swearing, I'm not being using a bad word or anything, I'm just using the proper word to describe the press release that we were forced to read, which was worthless and useless and time wasting there.
They were gonna go to, as the.
God love ya.
Please tell you, the board of UNH does, that I think so.
They were gonna go to sewer flushing next.
I thought you were finished five minutes ago.
Let's go from bullshit to sewer flushing.
Okay, yes sir.
Both of that's gone.
It's gone, yeah.
But it's gonna tear the pair, right?
Oh, he's got the press re.
Speedship's line, 1988 to 1994, along with the ship, wasn't it Paul Martin divesting charges to us?
Ninety-four?
Around ninety-four, yeah. I think he, you know.
Okay, Linda, did you note his, did you notice? I don't know what to call it, you call it the name of the book, okay, request re-Uber, so we're letting that go for now, right? And sewer flushing, cleaning, video inspection tender results, CAO.
Your worship, we can deal with this today, but I'd ask for a very quick council meeting afterwards to approve it, if you're inclined, invited tenders were requested from five firms for sewer flushing, vacuum cleaning, and video inspection for the 2017 season, responses were received from three firms, and the results are summarized in the memo attached, so after reviewing the tenders, it is recommended the contract be awarded to the lowest overall tenderer, Loomer's Pumping Service, and this is for your information and consideration.
They're pretty close, I gotta say, not too bad. Okay, go ahead councillor.
We did this, we do this yearly, is it the same company that it, going to do it, or who did it last year, is my question?
I don't believe it is the same company, I don't know if Dave would recall who did it last year.
No, I really don't recall, but I mean, we don't get the same company every year.
Right, right.
Depends on the pricing, so.
It is, it is an annual maintenance process, and so the other two bidders, Enviro Systems Inc. and Industrial Hydro Vac Services Limited, those are names we're familiar with, and one or both of them may have done workforce in the past.
We've dealt with all of them before.
Sorry?
We have dealt with all of them.
Yeah, so.
So one more question then, is it no, it doesn't matter whether we go from one company to another company year after year, it's the, is no, the continuity isn't important in this process?
No, it isn't, but as it turns out, it was Loomer's last year, that, thanks to Linda, but that, that isn't necessarily important, as long as we get the video files that can be reviewed in the future, and the cleaning is done satisfactorily, makes no difference.
I watch them when they're on Grand Street.
I'm looking forward to the pictures.
One year, okay, yeah, thanks Jeff.
Good, so, did you make the motion to who?
Did I make?
I thought some, who made the motion, Linda?
Mine.
Oh, okay, moved and seconded, any more discussion?
Questions?
Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried, so I received, I just received the entire package, medal in awe, for us to present to Mrs. Rodney, the Sovereign's Medal for Volunteers, and I left a message with her, 'cause I didn't wanna sit at a table and this be online and her here this way, but I did leave a message on her phone, so the federal government has asked that we present it in a nice form, a council meeting or something like that, so maybe the next council meeting, wait a minute, that won't even be televised, it doesn't, doesn't matter, anyway, just looking for a motion to do this, and it's for her work with the VON.
So moved.
Moved and seconded?
Questions?
Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried, senior safety coordinator, okay, for discussion, 'cause I didn't know where to go with it, we've talked about this before, right, and I got a call from, it must be the one, 41 Main, must be.
Churchill Main?
I think so, I got a call from there, and basically, they said they were speaking with housing, and housing told them that we were supposed to have a seniors' safety coordinator, I told them that that wasn't the case, we don't have to have one, the municipality has one, does Argyle?
It does.
Yeah, so they have one, and we're among either the only ones, or among the few that don't have them in the province, so where were we with that, I can't remember, they were, sorry, go your.
Well, I think we've had the discussion several times over the last few years, and I think that's one of the programs that councillor Hood is always famous for saying for, they cost share the first year, then after the next year, the year after that, we're fully, we.
We take it on.
We take it on, but I think some of the other things that, the other municipal units don't have, is we have a community policing officer, too, that has done a lot of that work, right, so those, I know people in the municipality in Argyle have used our resources with our community liaison, a community policing officer, that they don't have in the other two units, so I don't know if we're doing the same thing with different resources, or how it works, but it's one of those downloaded responsibilities, we do it the first year, it's gonna be, you're looking at 75, probably, to a hundred thousand dollars in your budget, I would think, by the time you're done with administration and office space, and salary, and vehicle, and administration help, and all the other things, it'll be a big ticket item, I think the government does pay the first, part of the first year, and I think originally, it went through the RCMP, and then it kind of morphed off into its own thing, so I think maybe, that might be a talk we have with our staff sergeant on how that works, but I think Jeff might echo some of the same things I said, and I don't know where we go from here, but.
You're on, can I remember the conversation?
So it was something not so long ago, council asked us to look into, and the funding program has ceased, just as was expected when they first introduced it, it was not gonna be a forever thing, it was what I call the bait and switch, they get you to buy, you know, 50 cent dollars, but you need to know that you'll be at 100% dollars in the near future, the other thing that happened was, they had, and I don't know if they still do, but they had a person in continuing care that was responsible for senior safety, and that person, again, I don't know if the position still exists, but it appeared to me that it was a, it was a download of a responsibility from the province to the municipalities, and they did it in the soft way, by offering a financial incentive for a period of time, you know, it, you know, the municipalities that have it, they enjoy it, but as you say, they might not have a community policing officer, I'm pretty sure it's not exactly the same role, but I don't know, again, maybe the staff sergeant could speak to it, he has experience working in the municipality where they have a senior safety officer, he would probably be a fan of the program, but I have nothing more to offer than that, just basically echoing your comments.
We don't use that word anymore.
Echoing, ah-ha.
Do we use that word anymore?
Echoing, boy, go ahead.
So what, it's a coordinator, not an officer, according to this, but, so what is, what do they do? I'm just in the dark.
So, go ahead Jim, do you have an answer for this? Do you have an answer?
I don't have an answer, but I was just gonna ask, it was mentioned that the other two municipal units have an officer, if it was important to us, could we not perhaps share with them?
Yeah, have one for the three municipal units, but what do they do?
I know Doris, do you know, Diana, can you come up to the microphone? We're gonna tap into our audience today.
She basically goes to the home of seniors, they do a program where they write down all your medications, and they put them in a vial, and they put them in the fridge, in the freezer, and you're, and then, and they put a sticker on the outside, and when EMS goes to your home, they automatically know to look there for this information, she also assists with seniors who don't have a way to get around, like maybe two doctor's appointments, or medical appointments of some kind, I don't know the full extent, it is Doris.
Doris Landry, yeah.
Yes, she does it for the municipality, but the way she was at my mom's home, that's how I know, she's, basically, she's not supposed to come. She's, basically, she's not supposed to come into the town and do it for the town.
Yeah.
She's basically to do it for the municipality only. And those are her words, not mom's.
No, 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 I understood that preview, I understood that beforehand, that...
Yes.
Don't wanna come out and do it.
But that's as much as I know that she does. She basically deals with seniors' needs. Like, my mother and father both have families, so we deal with their needs.
Yeah.
But there are seniors who do, do not have anybody.
Okay.
And she deals, and she does, she goes above and beyond. She's good at what she does.
Oh, she's great, yeah. Doris is really good.
Why isn't the province doing this? I mean, they, they come into your homes and do evaluations when you're coming home from the hospital and you're, if you have a knee replacement, they go check to see if you've got...
Long, if your, if your first question stands, why isn't the province doing this? Because some municipal unit said, oh, we'll do that. There's your download. Maybe I'm wrong.
It sure sounds...
But that's what happens, right?
It sounds like something that, um, care coordinators used to do, or do-do, or did-do, until they took it over and held, whatever.
Yeah.
But...
Right? It's back to do-do, but it's...
I'd like to know, uh, more about it before I...
So, let's, because we've got new council members, can we just have a motion to get more information about that?
Including possibly Sharon, if we ever did do it with other municipal units.
Yeah. Cause, cause we believe in the program, I mean, we, you know, what we know of it, it's great to have. The problem is, like everything else, it gets downloaded to us and we end up, so probably, correct me if I'm wrong, a lot of the people that live in, in the homes in Yarmouth in, in these, are from, you know, although maybe if you live in one of those homes, you're taken care of anyway.
No.
Okay?
Taken care of.
All right. So, a lot of people from the municipality would move into town because it's closer, and then we're gonna pay for that.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. What's that? The VON is, is more specialized, are they not?
VON home here, but it's very much like what they do.
Come on up, come on up, we're gonna use you while you're here.
Okay. Well, my experience with the VON is, I just had, I had knee replacement last year, so they come in and they look after post-surgery patients.
Yes, exactly.
That's, that's their job.
Yeah.
Like, um, Doris came, my mother lives at forty-one Maine that you're speaking of.
Yes, exactly.
Yes. Well, there's a gentleman that did move from the country into there, and she did come in and he is alone, and she did come in and look after him for that situation.
See, it's so much easier to live in town because we're so close to everything?
Exactly.
And so, the people move in and then the town assumes the costs, not that we mind, I mean, we're glad to have everybody here, but, but Jim's corrupt, you know, cost sharing, something like this would be a really good way to go. Or better yet, the province just needs to do it.
They just had a meeting at the, the seniors' home there with the housing, and I don't believe that the scene, the housing told them that...
But, yeah, and so that's what, the lady from, from forty-one Maine called me and she said, "Housing told us that, that the town is supposed to provide."
I don't, I don't think that was...
And I said, I, yeah.
That's inaccurate.
And housing knows the difference.
Yes, yes.
You know, so, yeah, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Yes, sir. Sorry, I can't see your light, so you're gonna let me know.
I know. Um, it just seems like an interesting coincidence, uh, that this should come up today. Uh, it was my first day doing Meals on Wheels today.
Yeah.
And, uh, the person that I was doing it with, who was helping me through it, um, actually brought this up. And so, it seems kind of, uh, fortuitous that it should be now, and, uh, we had this discussion. The thing is, is that it's a vital, um, and needed situation. We have, we have a lot of seniors in the area, we have a lot of seniors in Yarmouth, you know that. And, uh, many of them are, uh, in need and, uh, need to be looked after to a degree. And although I, I very much agree, and I'm sure that it is something that's being passed down, very much so, with, with downloads and that kinda thing, when it comes right down to it, we are the last line. The buck stops here, it has to. And it has to, someone has to look after it. Now, you know, we can, we can all argue about which level of government should be taking it, but ultimately, this needs to be looked at, and it's a situation that should be dealt with in one form or another. If we wanna do it, uh, through a group of volunteers, if we wanna do it with a professional, it is something that should be looked at. And so, for me personally, I think that we need more information, but we do need, even if we, we're thinking outside of the box, we need to be at least thinking about this and, and taking this seriously.
Thank you, counselor. Any other questions or comments? Do we have a motion maybe to explore this further?
This motion, yeah. All right, I'll make that motion. Move the second. What's that saying?
What, Counselor Cleveland, just maybe in a little broader context, what direction should we give staff is, is bringing in the, the resources, maybe presentation from maybe Doris or, or maybe as a municipality?
We're not, we'd like to hear what Doris has to say, and from there, we could probably have a conversation as to whether we wanna take on the exact same thing, or perhaps as part of, uh, the, the mayor's, uh, task force, take a look at it, estimate that maybe if we can't afford to have some kind of employee, perhaps we could have some kind of volunteer. So, should we look at it for us? And motions, if you have some. Both said, we'd be professional.
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Contrary? Motion passed. Next one is, uh, for Action Western Regional Housing Authority, free vacancies. Is that you, CAO?
Oh, yes. Yes, okay. So, uh, the town of Yarmouth has a board position on the Western Regional Housing Authority. Uh, we have advertised on two occasions, Linda, uh, for, for someone to fill the vacancy, and we've not had a, an application. So, we have a little bit of an issue. Um, I have spoke to someone with the housing authority and they impressed on me how important it is, uh, to them to have a fully, um, a full board complement. Uh, one of the things that the board does is review, review decisions of staff in terms of housing placements and, uh, you know, program placements, and, uh, you know, they value the, the community knowledge that, that comes from the individuals from the various municipalities. So, uh, they would like to have someone from the town of Yarmouth. Unfortunately, we've been able, unable to recruit someone to this point.
What's the next step? Do we re-advertise? Do we...
Well, we've been somewhat, somewhat unsuccessful. I would suggest that maybe if you, uh, as counselors, uh, with your ear to the ground in the community, might know of somebody who would be a good...
I think I just see one that's directly right in front of me.
A good applicant, and perhaps you could encourage an application be made.
Can we, uh, maybe get that application form before the end of the day and pass it on to somebody?
Uh, we can print out a copy of what we have. Uh, we don't receive the applications, right?
But we, we have one we can give.
Action's that part.
According to letter, we just need a letter sending it in and, uh, and a brief thing of the qual, uh, qualification, send it off to the minister. Uh, the point is that they, uh, they suggest that they want us to be, hang on. So, they want us to, uh, give fair consideration to women, Aboriginal people, visible minorities, and persons with disabilities for all appointments, so...
Knee replacement? You, you pretty well hit them all, dawg.
You fit the bill there. And you got a knee replacement to boot, so that's two categories knocked off, right there.
She got, she says she went five for five. Uh, CAO?
Sorry, your worship, uh, I, I was, I was mistaken when I was giving you advice there. It is a recommendation from the municipality, so if, if somebody came to mind and somebody wanted to make a motion and that candidate was willing to consider it, then we might have this done.
I'll make a motion from, if you wanna take over, your worship?
Second.
Want to be talking about?
Make a motion, we...
For the housing authority.
Board. I'll make, make a motion, we send in the name of Diane Evans to the...
Authority for the app, uh, vacancy on the board from the town of Yarmouth.
I'll second the motion.
Now, I missed something. Did you say, okay? You all right with that?
She gave me the nod two or three times.
Sure, okay.
Diane's in, she gave me five for five, so she's good.
Okay. Okay, moved and seconded. Any more discussion?
Question.
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Did you have a question? I'm sorry.
I just, all I wanted was to make sure that you know the path with the way we're doing. I know Jeff indicated, Jeff indicated that he could advertise twice, and Jeff responded, I support both, one hundred and one hundred percent Diane's application.
Oh, so do I, but we need to be careful not to tell people it happened because she was here.
No.
Cause nobody will come to our meetings. End up on a committee.
Maybe, maybe that's what encouraged you to say.
Good point. Okay. Good stuff. Application for Communities in Bloom. Counselor Dennis?
We have an application for a citizen who would like to be on the Communities in Bloom Committee, but we've already gone through the process for two thousand and seventeen, so is this acceptable or should we wait until the next term?
Is there vacancy?
No vacancy, no.
She's good on.
Hmm. Can't hear you.
There's no vacancy, no.
There's not? Okay. Then do we wait till two thousand and seventeen? Go ahead, CAO.
Your worship, if there's no vacancy, it might be appropriate to hold the application in the event that a vacancy occurs. If there was a vacancy in midterm, you could consider filling that vacancy for the balance of the term. Uh, so you could make the appointment anytime if there was a, a place on the committee, and you have an application.
Okay. Is that fair? Counselor, you good with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, previously distributed additions. Okay. Garbage. You're gonna say, oh, no. I don't even know where to start, but every single day I get more than one call about, number one, garbage being left out early, uh, not just early, chucking it out a week ahead of time. Um, and, and I'm just gonna say it, I wish I could just turn all the mics off, but, but the rats that are getting into the garbage, I had three calls this week already from different spots, um, dumpsters that aren't covered, all those pieces. So, do we have an answer for that?
Your worship, we have a solid, uh, waste bylaw that, uh, makes provisions for when garbage can be put to the curb and when it needs to be, when your cans or whatever need to be taken in. It does lay out conditions for storage of your solid waste on your property, so your garbage, your recyclables, your compost, uh, and there are specifications about, uh, lids, uh, tight-fitting lids and, uh, and so on. So, if there are specific issues, um, those should be directed to the bylaw enforcement officer and he can, uh, track those down.
And they are, hang on. And they are directed to him.
Mm-hmm.
If I get, if I get these calls, I always, I always send him a note or give him a call. So, I guess my question is, because I know, uh, I know, for example, if, if you live in housing, if there's an issue, housing sends somebody around to clean it up and then they charge it back to the, put it on their rent or something like that, those, those types of things happen. So, do, you must, I should probably read the, read the rules, but do we have a fine for somebody that's putting out garbage early? Is it a fine? Is it a... Are you laughing at Cliff? I'm just tired of it. Everybody knows what the rules are and they keep putting out their garbage, and, um, sorry about that, CAO, but it, it just gets tiring. Like, people keep calling because their neighbors can't even follow the rules, and if there are rules but no consequences, then something needs to give. Okay, now you can talk. Sorry.
What's the bylaws?
I guess I should've read it first.
About when you, when you put it out?
Nine o'clock the night before.
Yeah, what's that?
I believe so. Yep.
So, then you get, I'm on va, but I'm on vacation. Well, get your neighbor to put it out, like, we can't, sorry, I'm not gonna keep going.
You're on my back at six o'clock, nine o'clock, or whatever.
Yeah, well, I'm gonna slap a fine on you too. Okay. I know I sound like I'm ranting. Go ahead, Jim, I know it.
My wife has, uh, asked me to wait for the, for the garbage to come around before I can put it out in the sidewalk on Wednesday morning at nine fifty-nine, whenever the boys come around. Just keep on saying it somewhere, you know, you, you have a Facebook site, I have a Facebook site, your worship, uh, those are important things. Maybe we can give, uh, uh, people a, a discount on their taxes if they wait until, uh...
No.
I'm teasing Jeff a little bit. If they wait until...
Jerry just had a heart attack.
If, anyway, I, it's important, it's important, uh, and I see, because I walk a bit more than I used to, and I, I see problem areas too, your worship, so...
Okay, sorry about that, go ahead.
I'll take the answer, you take it for it.
Yeah, so it's, it's an enforcement issue, and, uh, so we'll take a look at what our process is right now on, on this particular one, put, put our, uh, shoulder on it a bit and see if we can, uh, fix things up.
Okay, thank you.
And it may result in, hey, it may result in some fines.
Well, I hope it results in fines. It's, I, I don't, I mean, my neighbors are great, but I wouldn't wanna be the neighbor of the person who keeps putting their garbage out a week early. And then there's rats in my backyard because of, I know, I never sound like I'm ranting, but I am today. And there's no excuse, like, everybody knows what the rules are. Okay, go ahead. Phil, you're on. It's Andy.
Jeff, and sometimes it goes to Russell, um, is there, is there more complaints or comments on, on rodents this year than there is any other year, or is it, or is it the, the same? I haven't had anybody contact me, but, um...
I did.
I'm just wondering if it's, I know last year we did a couple of things, I think up on the upper end of Argyle Street, but I'm just wondering if it's the same, or, or do you get the same amount every year?
I got three complaints this week.
Yeah, again, those, those complaints don't come directly to me, so, uh, usually, usually they don't come directly to me. Last year, I think something, something happened in nature that there were more, uh, rodents around than, than normal. Uh, this year, I haven't had the direct contacts, your worship's had a few this week. Uh, you know, I, you know, I can't say that there aren't as many, I can just tell you that, that if, if I had to guess, I would say it might not be as bad as last year, but that's not to say there aren't situations where there are, where there are rats, for not to say there aren't situations where there are, where there are rats, for sure.
Sandy?
Yes, I've gotten the same one that you had as well and, and I know it was taken care of. But there's also like a small business who I saw put out their garbage, but, I mean, they close at five o'clock, so they put out their garbage. And I watched a seagull go and pull every bag out into the street and he ripped them apart. So I was gonna go out clean, but this lovely lady I seen in a white car came and cleaned it all up and put it all back. So the hard part is, what do they do when they're leaving at five o'clock and there's nobody else there?
So putting the garbage out in their dumpster or? Well, small businesses aren't supposed to put their, their garbage out the side of the road, that, that's residential collection?
There is a residential in that building as well.
So it's residential garbage?
So it would have been the residential garbage.
Okay, so if, I mean, look, uh, yeah, if you're, if you're going home from work and putting out your residential garbage, I don't know what to tell you.
Yeah, I don't know either. Thanks.
So, so for me, it was, it was like apartment buildings. I got three separate calls from three different apartment buildings in, in different parts of town. I got south end, north end, center town, three different areas. And, and the residents around there are calling and saying like, like the rats are just, it's, it's crazy and, and there's garbage spilling over, so I guess we need to. Yeah, oh, that one, yeah, that was last week for me, but three this week. Yeah. Okay. So what was the answer to that? Sorry, see. I don't know. The question is, what are we gonna do? We're gonna keep directing it to Russell. Okay, I'll keep directing them to Russell, but boy, he gonna get real, really busy. Okay? Okay. Cliff, you're on. Michelle LaCoix, invitation regarding the four-wheelers.
Your worship, at the last police advisory committee meeting, Staff Sergeant, he starts, is he inspector or staff? Staff Sergeant LaCoix, who is the commanding officer of the town detachment of the RCMP, expressed some concerns about the plans in regards to ATVs being authorized to use Water Street. I don't want to comment from my personal view on whether that should happen or not. What I want to do is bring forth his concern and his request to meet with counsel and give us his, his thoughts on the issue. So it's my motion that we request Staff Sergeant LaCoix to appear before counsel and present us with his thoughts and concerns in relation to that issue.
Moved in seconded, any discussion? Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Dave, that means you, you need to get on finding us another route to let those ATVs through town. We are, I'm, that's what I say. We gotta find a way to connect. We do. It's, it's, you tell me, is it not huge? Tourism? Huge. Yeah, so. Get ready, Dave, we're coming. Okay. See, I got another request, I know I keep bringing this stuff up, but I got another request for Pride Crosswalk and where we are in that process. So last year we asked, and what happened, Dave, do you remember?
They contacted the provincial traffic authority and their, their view on it is that it takes away from this crosswalk safety, it doesn't meet the standard for crosswalks and that it shouldn't be done.
Okay, yeah. I would love to have a letter that says that, so that we're.
Street art or Pride Crosswalks, I mean, flight can be painted anywhere other than crosswalks. It doesn't have to go in a crosswalk. Can be on a sidewalk.
Your worship.
Oh, it is on there, isn't it?
Yeah, there is, there is an item in the, in the CAO's report from a last year that indicates that a Pride-themed color mural be painted on the sidewalk in front of the VIC. And so there were new streetscape improvements being considered and if the project proceeded, incorporating a Pride-themed element was, would be referred for consideration. Those streetscape improvements, the, the funding has not materialized and so nothing further has happened on this, but that is where it was left last year.
Thank you. Okay. Everybody all right with that then, till we find the money to, and then do it somewhere like that? Okay? So I can pass that on. And, and I, I did want to ask this while we're sitting here. Apparently we're having a Pride parade in September.
That's correct, that's been proposed. They applied for a parade permit.
That was my question. I didn't know if I had to, if I had to tell them to make sure they, they applied.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's on the sixteenth, I think it is.
Yeah, it is. I just wanted to make sure that they had applied for everything they needed to do for, for that. What else do they have to do? Just the permit?
Yeah, that's it pretty well. They have to range with the RCMP for, for an escort as well.
They have to do that.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, were you gonna ask something? Oh, sorry, Wade, I can't see that light at all.
I'd like to move my chair, please, no. Um, listen, just to, just to make it E, especially with the, the event of, of Pride coming up on, when was it, the sixteenth?
Sixteenth of September.
What would be wrong with, in some temporary way, priding up Alma Square? Be it with chalk or whatever, we could have, you know, get a bunch of people to do something there, kind of as a, if, if nothing else, symbolically, it makes a nice gesture and I think it would be, it would look really nice in there.
So they could.
Sure.
Yeah, I'll mention it to them.
Okay.
Okay, so we're good? Change of council date. So I think Jeff and I are gonna be away in September. What's that? Oh, Jim's gonna be away as well, Natalie's gonna be away. We're going to Portland. So. You got more money than Trump, that's right. So we're just looking for a motion to push the date a week. Okay? Well, it'll be the next Thursday, so that would be September twenty-first. July, August, September twenty-first, council. Yes. I gotta put it in. Okay, who seconded that? Thanks, Dawn. September twenty-first. Council, okay? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Okay, so we have in camera, but we need to do a council meeting, so motion to adjourn this one. And call to order, record of attendance, declaration of conflict of interest, approval of agenda, which is one item, which is the tender.
I move to accept the tender for, for the flushing program for the lowest tender.
Moved in seconded, any discussion?
Question.
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried, motion to adjourn. Okay, and we are going in camera. Thanks, everyone.